I will call the meeting to order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the City Council chambers. If you would now, please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is due to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please, Brianna.
Granquist.
Here.
Arnz.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
McCarthy.
Muren.
Here.
Snorton.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, if no discussion, please vote. This is the first vote on our new voting system technology, so bear with us.
So I appreciate your patience, please, yes. Okay. All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, I would then look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, that takes us to the public hearings and related action portion of the council agenda, item number seventeen. We have a series of public hearings, and we will start with number seventeen. I will open this public hearing to consider a Class C beer wine distilled spirits on and off sale liquor license application for R A R Enterprises LLC doing business as founders, five oh one West Norfolk Avenue, Suite one ten, and the manager application of Miranda L. Bright. And to kick off discussion on this, we'll hear from our city clerk, Brianna.
On February ninth, two thousand twenty-four, I received the Class C liquor license application for R A R Enterprises, doing business as founders at five oh one West Norfolk Avenue, Suite number one ten. This location has had a Class C license since October of two thousand twenty-one, but that was issued to the previous owner for the boathouse, and R A R Enterprises recently purchased the business, and so that's the need for the new application and new license. A background check was completed by the Norfolk Police Department and is attached to the agenda. And then, following the public hearing, the next item on the agenda is the resolution, which will be council's official recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission on issuance of the license. The applicant should be here if you have any specific questions.
Thank you, Brianna. Any questions for Brianna? This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to comment can do so now. Okay, seeing and hearing no one, I will move to close the hearing and proceed to item eighteen, looking for a motion to consider approval, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash eleven of the Class C liquor license application for R A R Enterprises LLC doing business as founders, five oh one West Norfolk Avenue, Suite one ten, and the manager application of Miranda L. Bright.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash eleven. Second.
Okay, motion and second, any discussion, council? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution twenty twenty-four dash eleven is adopted.
Item number nineteen, we'll open this public hearing at the request of Parlor and Libations LLC to consider zoning change from I one light industrial district to C two central business district on property addressed as seven fourteen West Norfolk Avenue. And to open this public hearing and give us some background, we'll hear from Val Grimes, our city planner. Val.
Thank you. This piece of property is on the north side of Norfolk Avenue between Seventh and Eighth Street, and what I know from the applicant is they want to tear down an old building and put up a new building that has retail on the first floor and residential above, and that is outright permitted in the C two zoning district. And also, the C two zoning district is the only one that does not require parking, off street parking spaces, because in the downtown area, there really isn't any on onsite parking, and that would be the same thing for this. And so that's why they are asking for this, and I'm not sure, we have a full house, if the applicant is here or not.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Val. Any questions from council? This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Okay, seeing and hearing no one, I will ask for a planning commission report, Brianna.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, at the request of Parlor and Libations LLC to consider a zoning change from I one light industrial district to C two central business district on property addressed as seven fourteen West Norfolk Avenue. Planning Commission recommends approval of the vote, approval of the request with a seven to zero vote.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will close the hearing and move to item number twenty. Would entertain a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-eight sixty-nine approving a zoning change from I one to C two on property addressed as seven fourteen West Norfolk Avenue.
I'll offer for consideration ordinance number fifty-eight sixty-nine approving a zoning change from I one to C two.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion on this, council? Further comments? Okay, hearing none, short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-eight sixty-nine carries on first reading.
Hearing no opposition, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number fifty-eight sixty-nine on second and third.
Second.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-eight sixty-nine carries on second and third.
All right, item twenty-one, open this public hearing to consider a request from B A S Holding LLC to consider zoning change from A agricultural district to I one light industrial district on property addressed as twenty-two hundred South Victory Road. And once again, Val, could you kick us off in discussion here, please?
Yes, thank you. This piece of property is just south of Monroe on Victory Road, and so it's actually connected to the conditional use permit that will be heard for the second time at Planning Commission tomorrow morning, because this is associated with an asphalt plant that has been in operation on Ken Porter's land, south of Monroe, just north of his operation there on Victory Road. And so, a new company bought out the previous asphalt plant, so everything is staying where it is right now, but they were able to buy the land to the east that now connects that piece to Victory Road, and then they can have just a one way in and one way out instead of two-way going up and down Monroe. And so that is what they would like to do with this other piece of property, and potentially put like a, an office and some like truck storage on this piece also, if there's any questions.
Well, you said this has been heard by Planning Commission, but we'll go before it again tomorrow morning?
The zone.
The adjustment?
Yeah, the zone change and the cup were heard at the same Planning Commission meeting. Then, the recommendation for the zone change comes to you guys. If you pass it on all three readings, then we will actually do a vote on the written conditional use permit tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Val? This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to comment can do so now. Hearing no one, Planning Commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, at the request of B A S Holding LLC to consider a zoning change from A agricultural district to I one light industrial district on property addressed as twenty-two hundred South Victory Road. Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with a seven to zero vote.
Okay, I will close the hearing and move to item twenty-two, and look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-eight seventy approving a zoning change from A to I one zoning on property addressed as twenty-two hundred South Victory Road.
I will offer for consideration ordinance number five eight seven zero approving a zoning change from agricultural to I one.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion on this, council? Hearing none, short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-eight seventy carries on first reading.
Again, hearing no opposition, I make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance fifty-eight seventy on second and third.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings, if no further discussion, please vote.
I cannot get that to come back, so we will just do a roll call vote. Granquist.
Yes.
Arnz.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Muren.
Yes.
Snorton.
Yes.
Clausen.
Yes.
Hildebrand.
Yes.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-eight seventy carries on second and third.
Very good, thank you. Item twenty-three, I will open this public hearing to consider the adoption of a workforce housing incentive plan to allow for the use of tax increment financing for new construction activities for workforce housing, as defined by thresholds set forth by the Nebraska Department of Economic Development and the Nebraska Community Development Law. And to open the discussion here, we'll hear from Candace Alder, our Economic Development Director. Candace.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Yes, you have in front of you a proposed resolution and a workforce housing incentive plan, and basically what this allows us to do is use tax increment financing for new construction activities, as long as the end unit price for the, for the housing units fall within a specific threshold as defined by the Nebraska Department of Economic Development. So in this case, it's right now currently three hundred thousand dollars for owner occupied units, and no more than two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars per unit for rental units. And so, really, our, our process will not change as it relates to redevelopment plans, the presentation of a, an application for taxing increment financing, and then bringing forward redevelopment plans as it relates to the project as a whole. Council will still be able to have those discussions, there's still the public hearings that are involved with all tax increment financing projects. This just widens the potential uses for tax increment financing to include new construction, as long as it stays within those thresholds. Now, as different projects come available, we'll continually be checking with the Nebraska Department of Economic Development to make sure that we have the latest guidelines that we're presenting, and another thing that is a part of this is you have to have a housing study that's less than sixty months old. We also fit that criteria, so we see that we do have the mechanisms in place in order to, to pass this workforce housing incentive plan if you deem fit to do so. Do you have any questions for me?
I do have a question. So those thresholds, the three hundred thousand and the two hundred and thirty-five thousand for rentals, those thresholds were set by the Nebraska Department of Economic Development, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And Candace, when was this state policy adopted? Do you know the background of that?
I believe in twenty eighteen.
So it's, it's fairly recent.
Legislature passed it in twenty eighteen, and the bill was signed by the governor in twenty nineteen.
And then Candace, how will this be pleased to make sure that where these numbers come out? Who's in charge of that?
Yeah, so this is a question I would have loved to have had Randy Gates here to help me with, because he really does all of that legwork as it relates to developers making sure that they submit their information for all their projects and expenditures that are in these TIF-able costs, so that Randy would be doing that oversight in his capacity.
Can I help you with that, Candace?
Yes.
So what we're voting on tonight is just to allow the workforce housing as, as a, as a TIF expenditure, but when it comes to the details within each project, that would occur on a case-by-case basis, that would come back to the C D A to make the decisions, and that would be part of, of a redevelopment contract, if you wanted certain provisions within that, certain parameters.
That's helpful, Danny. So tonight is just adopting this policy as ineligible incentive within the City of Norfolk, but not pointed or targeted toward, toward any one project at this time?
Yes, that's correct. We currently don't have the ability within, within our TIF, how we do it, to, for the construction of workforce TIF, this would just overall allow that, the parameters for which would come with each redevelopment contract, though. Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for Candace while she's up here? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so anyone wishes to comment can do so now.
Mr. Mayor, council, we, we'd like to go with full transparency on a project, full transparency on a project, and so what we've done is asked for the workforce TIF to become an option.
Can you, can you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark Otto, developer on First and Norfolk.
Thank you.
And so what we've done is brought this as an option to the city to utilize. Now, another hat I wear as a consultant for Community Capital Partners, this workforce TIF we're using across the state of Nebraska to try to put a thousand single-family homes in, so it's, it's not a one-off usage for this project. I think Senator Wayne passed it in twenty eighteen, and it was designed to bring housing to Omaha that's affordable, whether it be for rent or for sale. So the workforce TIF is a viable product that's being used everywhere. As it's become aware, most people didn't realize outstate how to utilize it till recently. On the other note, is the project at First and Norfolk. So this, this is something that we've, we've talked about, we've brought in, the, the city made a commitment of twenty-some million dollars into a park structure, and when they made that commitment, it's paying off. They've got people like us taking a look at this site and saying, wow. So when you look at investors and investments and invest-ins, when you invest in a project, it gets other people to invest. We believe our project that we're bringing to you is a similar project. Is this, will it work on the P D F? Maybe?
Mark, I'm gonna say we, we will abide by the five-minute timing rule on this, but there is another item later on the agenda, so if you, if you're not able to finish up here, we can finish there.
So this is, this is the pedestrian mall that we're introducing, and we're gonna connect the, the intersection of First and Norfolk and Norfolk's downtown with Johnson Park. And, and our intention is for this to be the union, that Johnson Park will flow through the downtown and make it one cohesive area. The, the intention is not that it's just going to put housing, it is, it's gonna add a hundred and thirty units. The intention is not just that it's gonna add some retail, it is, it's twenty-five thousand square feet. The intention is that it is gonna draw people to the City of Norfolk who maybe wouldn't have come here. It's also going to enhance the living experience for people in Norfolk. Norfolk to date has not had a true walkable area. You've got some units downtown, granted, this is gonna add scale to that. It, it also is gonna have an older European feel. Whenever you go to great tourist areas, it is in the old spots, it is the old area, it is the architecture that's inviting. It's a three-story project, first floor, well, this, this drawing that you see was, was done in a hurry to get me something to show you guys, it'll be much more intense than that. We are trying to create an experience here that will invite people from all areas in and keep people to stay. You've got students in town, you've got students that are growing and moving away, the, I think they call that the brain drain. We can help flip some of that, we can create an experience here. Worth noting, this site with the first floor retail will generate more money for the city than the current property taxes are. Once the current property taxes and the TIF comes to closure, it's incredible what it'll generate for the city. We'll talk high level today because we've got future discussions for that. But I think it's, it's an amazing site, we've put a ton of work, energy and effort into this site, and we're excited just to give you a chance to take a look at it, and as you vote on these things, know why we've asked to have some other items come along with it.
Okay, thank you, Mark, I appreciate that, and again, as I stated, I think if there's further discussion more specific to your project, later we can revisit that discussion. We want to keep this public hearing within the confines of the workforce housing incentive plan consideration, so I'll ask about that. Are there projects that you've done throughout the state that have utilized that policy?
Yes, so we've just started on that project, that policy, we've just started utilizing it in Sydney, Nebraska, we're adding, I believe it's eleven homes there, five in the first round. Sydney's such a great example, because we all thought that town was dead when Cabalos left, and that, that town hired, I think David Scott's his name, out of Lincoln, city administrator, city finance, he basically went door-to-door and restored the city, and they now have a housing shortage, which is incredible. We've also utilized this project in Holdridge, Nebraska, and that passed, I think, in the last couple of weeks to add housing for Holdridge, too, and we've created a little development there to get it started.
Safe to say that, so this was a state adopted policy, challenge in rural areas is, is housing affordability, this was one way that the state could get at incentivizing housing that at least establishes some cost thresholds to start to address the affordability challenges, is that your perspective of the, the intent of the policy in the first place?
Very much so, very much so, and, and it's working, right? We're, we're using common sense as we build things to make sure that they are affordable for people to actually get into.
Okay, any other questions for Mark while he's up?
The two developments you're talking about in Holdridge and Sydney, about what square footage were those houses that you're putting up?
I think they're right at twelve seventy-seven, or twelve seventy-three, not to be too specific.
Right, and then with land, everything, you were able to get that under the three hundred?
Yeah, I believe our, our threshold in Holdridge, our Perry's doing the construction and building out that project, I think in Holdridge were two eighty-five, and in Sydney were three hundred.
Yeah.
It's, it's worth noting that under the workforce TIF, land is not included in that price.
Right.
So you could have the cost of the land be above and beyond the build cost.
Would you say you're, with the TIF bonding, you're able to knock at least ten to twenty percent off the overall cost of that house to get it in the affordable level? Maybe more like ten percent, probably?
Those things are amazing, because effectively the builder is building them for no profit.
Right.
He's literally banking on the TIF in the back hall, and Community Capital Partners, who represents, is doing the same thing, we're literally delaying the pay that we would charge normally to keep that price down, to help them get there.
Right.
So, so we'll say the two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar units, on an amortization schedule of like twenty years, seven percent, that, that's still like a nineteen hundred dollar payment without any insurance or taxes. So how are, how are people saying this is affordable workforce housing?
Yes, so affordable workforce housing, what is Norfolk's median income right now for a household?
I would say fifty-nine thousand, just on guessing.
If we called it sixty, for, for easy math, would be five thousand a month, thirty-three percent of five thousand a month would be sixteen hundred and fifty dollars, something like that. I think our average rent's about sixteen hundred and fifty on here, the, the one bedrooms start at twelve, and the two bedrooms at sixteen, so it comes together.
It'd still be about five hundred short.
Yeah, so on this project, it's important to have commercial, and first of all, we're not pushing the two thirty-five limit, that's the cap, but we wanna.
Can you build it for less?
Yeah, yep, I sure hope so, but numbers are showing that we can. We had, we intentionally set out to build a twenty-five million dollar project, but this is such a top-down site, this is such a growth piece for Norfolk. If this is done really well, it's a hundred-year project, right? This is something that will grow the town and extend it and make it something, I don't know where else you'll go in the state to see this experience. So we, we wanna work within the budget of what a person can afford, but yet produce the most highest-level product that we could possibly produce to entice people in. And the commercial is a, a critical part to offset the rents and the cost of the build on this project.
In, in general, one of the ways I imagine from what you're saying, you're getting at the affordability challenge is building smaller units, it sounds like, in more higher, in more high-density settings, is that correct? That's what it seems like you're, you're getting at here, correct?
Yep, it, it really is. And, and when you build smaller units, you can take that unit up a notch or three, but you're also hopefully relating people to the exterior, right? We've got such an amazing thing, once they leave their apartment, the apartment just becomes part of it, not all of it.
Any other questions or comments on the workforce housing incentive plan, part of this, right now? Okay, thank you, Mark. This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Okay, seeing and hearing no one, I will move to close the hearing and proceed to item twenty-four, and ask for a motion to consider resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve for the adoption of a workforce housing incentive plan to allow for the use of tax increment financing for new construction activities for workforce housing as defined by thresholds set forth by the Nebraska Department of Economic Development and the Nebraska Community Development Law.
I'll make a motion for consideration of resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion or comments on this, council? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present. All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution twenty-two-four-dash-twelve is adopted.
All right, that takes us to our regular agenda and item number twenty-five. Look for a motion to consider approval to advertise for bids for the fire station and police station roof replacement projects.
Your honor, I'll be abstaining from this vote, please.
Okay, thank you.
I'll offer consideration for advertising for fire station, police station roof replacements. Second.
Okay, motion second. And on this, we'll hear some background from both Chief Miller and Chief Rogge. Chief, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This topic's been something we've discussed before, but we'll give a quick recap here. The CIP numbers that Chief Miller and I were working from, Chief Miller's was specifically for the police station roof. The number that we submitted in the CIP would be for both Fire Station One and Station Two. Fire Station One and the police station roof were put on in the two thousand eight year. Those came with fifteen-year warranty programs. So we're reaching the end of end of life on those, and we've had some notable issues, especially at the police station and the dispatch center. So what we've done is we've built a request for bid and a and a spec to capture both Station One and the police station. Station Two is an asphalt shingle roof that'll get done at a later date. And Chief Miller and I have kind of gathered some data here and put together what we believe to be a pretty good bid specification. We've leaned on some third-party folks and some local folks to help us make this something that will last. We're looking at a twenty-year warranty on this roof, and with your approval, we'll go out to bid. We expect some competitive bids, and our project, our priority A, will be the police station with the fire station to follow. So I would answer any questions you might have.
What's the timeframe that you're expecting the replacement to happen on these roofs?
Hopefully, it's not wishful thinking, but I think we were looking, and Chief Miller, you chime in, but we were going to put a no later than September first deadline as far as construction to be or work to be done on both projects.
On both?
Yes, yes. We want to get it done as soon as it starts to warm up. We get permission to go out to bid, we'll go out right away, we'll advertise, we'll collect those bids, review them, and hopefully award soon thereafter, and hopefully have people on our roofs this summer, early summer, be what we're hoping for. We don't expect the delays in materials that we did a year ago this time when we were talking about this or even two years ago. It sounds like those shortages have kind of subsided, so we're staying optimistic that we can award this and there wouldn't be delays like we've seen in some other things that we're trying to purchase.
Any other questions? Chief Rogge? Thank you, chief.
All right, thank you.
All right, Chief Miller, anything to add to that?
I I don't have anything to add other than thanking Chief Rogge. He did a lot of the legwork on this and met with different companies to make sure that we had a good product and we reviewed it. And and I don't have anything to add other than thanking Chief Rogge for his efforts and time to put it together.
All right, thank you, chief. Any discussion, counsel, or questions?
Just to get caught up, this was this has been approved in our CIP plan previously, right?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, this would be public safety tax anticipation bonds.
Any other questions? Any public input on this? Okay. Hearing no further discussion, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative. Granquist, Arnz, Snorton, Webb, Hildebrand, Clausen abstaining. Motion carries.
Item twenty-six, we'd look for a motion to consider approval to advertise for bids for the paving district number five twenty-one for Norfolk one forty subdivision project.
I'll make a motion to approve the to advertise for bids for the paving district number five two one.
Second.
Motion and second. For some background on this, we'll hear from Steve Ramis or Anna Allen, our Assistant City Engineer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is for consideration to advertise for bids for the paving district. This paving district is associated with the Norfolk one forty subdivision out on the west side of town, just south of Highway two seventy-five, west of Fountain Point. There's a new development out there, a new building that they're planning on getting started on, the CAT dealership out there. So we want to advertise to start on our paving district. So this will be paving thirty-foot-wide roadway curb and gutter section with trail and sidewalk along each street section. This will go from South Forty-third Street from Highway two seventy-five, south about seven-hundred-and-fifty feet, and then east fourteen-hundred feet, and then back up north to meet with the existing Madison Avenue that runs south of Fountain Point. This also includes a right-turn lane onto Forty-third Street from eastbound Highway two seventy-five and a realignment of the private driveway that goes off to the west. Trying to think of the the name over there, but there's another business right over there. So we had to realign that driveway to meet meet up with the Highway two seventy-five and meet up with that, so it's not interfering with that turn lane. I can't answer any questions you guys have on this.
Thank you, Anna. Any questions, counsel? Doesn't look like it. Thank you, Anna. Don't go far. Any public input on this?
Should he Hildebrand's supposed to have the?
Jim McKenzie, I guess I just had one question. What dollar amount do you anticipate will be paid for out of CHAF money that won't be assessed on that paving district? I see there's the right-turn lane. That was probably part of my question, significant part.
Hang on, Jim. Almost, almost there. Do you have that? Well, once you hand me what you've got there, Anna, I'm going to bring up my email here.
So the question, Jim, is what part of this is being funded by CHAF?
Yes, how many how many dollars are we? In the I want to do I need to do some quick math here in my head, but when we created the district, we had estimated the actual construction cost at about two-point-three million with estimated overhead. It's six-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand. The the current construction estimate for paving is right at about one-point-six million. So currently, we're about seven-hundred thousand under our original estimate for construction costs. In this particular model, we had intersection costs at three-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars. So I would anticipate that that number's probably going to be closer to probably going to be under a little under three-hundred thousand dollars for what we would call intersection costs. And probably half of that, well, not quite half of that, seventy-five thousand, one-hundred thousand is going to be for our cost share on a box culvert. Which does which would I believe that does come out of CHAF.
And so how about the the turning lane? Was that part of that?
It's 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 part of the overall cost, but we're not paying for the turning lane.
So that will be assessed to the property, to the developer?
Assessed to the property, yeah. We're we just pay per state statute. We pay for the cost of the intersection.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Comments or questions? Okay. Hearing no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right, item twenty-seven. We'd look for a motion to consider approval to advertise for bids for the sanitary sewer extension district number two fifty two-five-five of the Norfolk one forty subdivision project.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Motion second. And Anna, once again, some background on this, please.
This is a consideration of approval to advertise for bids for the sanitary sewer district following about the same path, same location of this Norfolk one forty subdivision. The sanitary sewer will be a ten-inch PVC sanitary sewer main that will run along Fortieth Street for about two-hundred-and-fifty-five feet. It'll tie in with the existing sewer at that Madison that runs south of Fountain Point. Go no go south and then along the new Madison Avenue, fourteen-hundred foot west, and then north on that Forty-third Street for about three-hundred-and-seventy-five feet. So that will be for the the ten-inch PVC sanitary sewer and all the, you know, accessories and everything else that need to go with it. That'll be assessed to lots one and three, one, two, two and three.
Okay, thank you, Anna. Doesn't look like it. Thank you, Anna. Any public input on this? Okay. Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item twenty-eight, we'd look for a motion to consider approval to advertise for bids for the water main extension district number one twenty-eight of the Norfolk one forty subdivision project.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Second.
Motion second. Anna, one more time, please.
All right, last one. So this is will be for advertising for bids for the water main extension and the same subdivision. This will be a ten-inch ductile iron pipe water main and accessories, fire hydrants, taps for services. This will tap into the existing water line on Fortieth Street near Fountain Point, and then it'll run south and then west along that new Madison Avenue alignment, and then it'll tie back into the twenty-four-inch water line that runs along the south side of Highway two seventy-five. And again, that will be assessed to lots one, two, and three.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Anna. Any questions? Comments, counsel?
Are these happening on the same side of the road or opposite sides of the road, or how are they next to each other?
The I think the water's on the north side. Sewer, I think, is in the street. So I mean, there's there's that separation between them. And then I know there's other utilities that need to go in there as well that aren't associated with the city, but power and gas and things like that need to go in there also.
Yeah, I was just asking due to construction and timeframe and.
Oh, correct, yeah. So the water, yeah, the water and the sewer would have to go in before the street going.
Right, and utilities from other services are going to try to?
Yes, those, I mean, those should be running along in the terrace anyways, so if we get that street section in and maybe prior to doing a sidewalk or trail, they'd be able to get their utilities in.
Any further questions? Thank you, Anna. Any public input on this? Hearing no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item twenty-nine, we'd entertain a motion to consider approval to submit a grant application to the Recreation Area Development Program of the Lower Elkhorn Natural Resources District in the amount of thirty thousand dollars to go toward a picnic, shelter, and restroom at Liberty Bell Park and for the mayor to sign all contracts and documents related to the grant.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval. Second.
Motion second. For some background on this, we'll hear from Nate Powell, our Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. This is a a grant for with the Recreation Area Development Program grant with LE NRD, the Lower Elkhorn Natural Resource District. This does require a fifty percent match. We do have two-hundred-thousand dollars budgeted for a restroom. We want to use those funds to actually add a shelter to that as well, and that shelter will be a cost of about thirty thousand. So this will cover the the additional costs for a shelter. And do you have any questions? This is at Liberty Bell Park.
When you say shelter, can you kind of describe what you're talking about?
Yeah, picnic shelter with with maybe four picnic tables underneath, a twenty-by-twenty covered shelter.
Is this by the pickleball courts?
Yeah, it'd be it'd be by the pickleball courts and the restroom and the playground are kind of that there's going to be a central area for the restroom and then for the shelter as well, right in there.
Nate, this is just a kind of another step in the evolution of and and kind of revival of Liberty Bell. Pickleball courts were mentioned, and those are made possible by a grant that was received, but also the playground upgrade. Just as a refresher, talk a little bit about what's happened at Liberty Bell here in the last few months and the and the plans moving ahead.
Yep, we've had some donors step up from the Integrity Foundation, and they hired Kaboom to come build a playground for us, and we did a community build for a playground that we've put in. We've got one more feature to put in there, a swing and a climber, actually two features, a swing and a climber to add to that. That'll go to the to the east of the current location, and that was built last summer. And then they also donated pickleball courts. We'll have four pickleball courts kind of to the north of that playground. And then we've also had budgeted for a restroom to replace the the swimming pool that was removed. There used to be restrooms attached that were used, and so we're going to replace that with some new restrooms. And then we also have some parking lot funds to do some improvements there, get the ADA sidewalks up to up to standard so we can get folks to the to the softball field and also to the pickleball courts and the bathroom and the shelter. We'll get all that done as well as part of this project, and we did have two-hundred-thousand dollars for the restroom budgeted, and that's what we're using for the grant.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, thank you, Nate. Any public input on this? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item thirty, we'd look for a motion to consider to consider approval of standard AIA design-build contract with Huff Construction for the team lockers at Tahazuka Park.
Your honor, at this time, I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve a standard AIA design-build contract with Huff Construction.
Second. Second.
Okay, motion and second. Nate, once again, please.
Yes, Mayor and Council, tonight, these are these are perfect examples of how how you get projects done in parks. We have donations, grants, and partnerships, and that's what we're we're presenting here and showing that this is how you get projects done. This is what we'll present in the master plan as part of our funding strategies to get these projects done. This is the the team for the team lockers at Tahazuka for one-point-three This is the, the team, for the team lockers at Tahazuka for 1.3, 1,350,000. This is funded with a partnership with Norfolk Public Schools, Northeast Community College, each donating $400,000 towards the project, and a donation from Mallon Kohler Estate donation, 550 also going towards this project. This is to design a set of team lockers, two sets of restrooms, one on, one set on the outside for the public and one set on the inside for the locker room area. And this will also have indoor batting cages as part of the project. As part of the donation, they wanted facilities for youth, and so we're gonna have some indoor, an indoor facility for youth to use for programs and also for batting cages as well, especially in the wintertime when they're needed the most. So this contract allows us to start our preliminary design. Once the preliminary design is done, when all parties agree, because we'll all be working together with the donor, with the schools as well and the city, to come up with the best design possible at the best price possible as well. Then, once we have that preliminary design done, we'll bring a contract amendment back to council, and we'll have the final project for you then. So staff recommends this AIA contract with Huff Construction. They are also here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Nate. Any questions, council?
Do you have any drawing showing what it's gonna look like?
We will when we bring the amendment back. We have to, this is to get us started on the preliminary design.
So Nate, this kind, the design-build is a fairly new concept within Parks and Rec anyway. We've implemented in a few other projects recently, right? So, and, and you're familiar in using this process to get projects done.
Become very, very familiar with this process, and again, this is gonna help us have multiple parties at once looking at, at the project, and as we, as people, as groups say we want something, we'll know the cost right away. So we'll know if we'll be able to afford it, we'll know, we'll know what we need to take out of the project, and we'll be able to nail this down a little bit quicker, rather than bidding out something that we can't afford or with too many dreams involved, so.
Okay. How, how did that go? Donations, grants, partnerships?
That's correct.
That's the formula, huh? It seems to be working.
That's the formula for funding parks projects, yes.
Good work. Thank you. Any other comments or questions, council? Any public input? Okay. Hearing no further discussion?
Voting in the affirmative. Granquist, Arnz, Snorton, Webb, Hildebrand, Clausen, abstaining, Muren. Motion carries.
Item 31. Would look for a motion to consider approval of the facade improvement program guidelines for the City of Norfolk, Nebraska Downtown Revitalization Grant.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Motion second. And for some background on this, we'll hear once again from Candace Alder.
Okay. You have in front of you a set of guidelines that we're proposing to use for the implementation of the grant award for facade improvements. That was part of our recent award of downtown revitalization funds from the Nebraska Department of Economic Development. So the total award on that grant was 435,000, and for this grant cycle, we proposed 310,000 of that be used for the facade improvement program. Last time in 2017, when we got this grant, I think we only had about 75,000 that we were able to infuse into that project. The rest went into Riverpoint Square, so this is substantially more. It's, it's been a good program. What it entails is a one-to-one match from property owners that allows them to partner alongside the city and really the state of Nebraska to make improvements to their properties in the downtown district, and really, it does extend beyond the downtown grant. I'm gonna pull up that website. Okay. Not sure if this mic's on. Then I can work from both. So I have in, in front of you the city's website, and if you go down to city projects, we've made a project page for the downtown revitalization grant. So this is where individuals can find more information for this program at this time. We've debuted this at the downtown Norfolk Association meetings and the vehicle parking district meetings, and we'll be working closely with those entities and the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District to try to communicate this information as it's released. So you can see the study area where downtown revitalization funds can be used. The proposed guidelines, which are in your packet and in front of you tonight, are there. And then we really detail this timeline. It's a pretty intensive timeline as it relates to the implementation of the project. September was when we submitted and received notification of award in January. You are right here. We're still working to get one final document for the release of funds for these, and then we're gonna go into some informational workshops for contractors, for property owners, and we're really gonna be doing that alongside our partners with the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District. They've been hired on to administer these funds for us, and they really do a great job of taking all the projects through the criteria that is necessary, like the Davis Bacon, any kind of environmental reviews, correspondence with any kind of historical elements as it relates to the program. For this, the maximum award is proposed to be $25,000. Again, that's a one-to-one match, so a property owner has to come to the table with 25,000 to get 25,000. And it's designed to be set up as forgivable over a five-year period. I would entertain any questions that you have for me.
Candace, what happens if that 310,000 designated just for the facade improvements doesn't get used? What happens to the rest of that money?
We would look at potentially presenting a different or alternative project or scope of work to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development, but that would really ultimately be up to them on whether or not we would, would get that. We have had a lot of interest over the years. There was funds that, or there were applicants in the last cycle that did not use the, or did not get to have access to these funds, and then our team's been just keeping a running log of people that have reached out and had interest. The applications are reviewed by a design advisory board. It's a sub-board of the Vehicle Parking District. That group comes together to review the applications, and then the city staff works alongside Nina to administer.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
If a, if a business used this program before, are they allowed to use it again? Or is there a different, like somebody that didn't use it yet allowed to use it before that would come along? You know what I mean?
Yeah, so it's set up to where they can apply still, but those that have not received funds prior, in prior grant cycles, those that have not received funds would have higher priority in that application review.
And the rehab work here is limited to facades?
Correct. And signage. They can do new signs with it, but yeah, you're talking windows, awnings, tuck pointing if you have that old brickwork that's coming. A lot of times in downtown districts, you're working with very old buildings. Some of them have been covered up by facades for decades that are dated, and so when you pull that off and you see what's underneath of them, this really helps to minimize that risk and keeps that historical character within the downtown districts.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
I've been kind of listening to these grants and stuff that guys are getting, and you know, they pay for stuff upfront, half of it or whatever, and one thing that I don't see where you're taking into consideration is it's fine this year, but you're not figuring in the maintenance and what that's gonna cost. The maintenance on these projects is gonna eat you alive. And, you know, like all those cute little flower gardens on Benjamin, and then the showers, the lockers and stuff like that in Liberty Bell, you know, that's fine, I understand we need it, but they need to figure in what the maintenance is gonna cost on this. Because it's gonna come back to haunt you big time. And I think before we get too excited about building more parks and doing this and doing that, you need to get this Johnson Park fiasco fixed first. That needs to be done and completed, and see what that's gonna end up being, and then move on. But let's finish one project and then go forth.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Tim Ernst.
Thank you. Any other public input on this? Okay. Hearing none?
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 32. Would look for a motion to consider approval to award a contract to Retchens Construction Incorporated of Tilden, Nebraska, for the water extension district number 129 North Highway 81 project for an amount of $320,035.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Second.
Motion in second. For some background on this, we'll hear from Chad Roberts, our Water Systems Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. What we got in front of you here is the contract from Retchens Construction out of Tilden for Water District 129, which is that district we've been talking about on North 81, Highway 81. The contract came in at $320,035. This project, a little bit of the history of this project, it consists of 1,700 feet of 8-inch water main. It's gonna extend south from Eisenhower to the south 1,700 feet, and then we've got a little bit of 6-inch, 250-foot of 6-inch main that crosses 81 over to one of the properties on the east side. So the other bidder that we had was Penro out of Pilger, or excuse me, Pender, and they came in at $437,672.60. So a pretty substantial difference there between the two. Retchens contract or estimate came in underneath the engineer's cost estimate. So the engineer, along with the city staff, recommends approval with Retchens for the water extension district 129, again, in the amount of $320,035. Any questions?
Chad, with that big of a gap, did you see any differences between the two, and do they both meet the, I guess, the contract we were looking for?
Yes, yes. They both, they both meet the contract requirements. The material that they had in there was, is what we had in our standard city specs. I think the thing that we had going for us is, is Retchens is here, they're ready to go. With this being approved, they're looking at starting later this week on the project. So with them here in Norfolk working on projects, they, they, yes, exactly.
Chad, is there a timeline on when this project is supposed to be completed?
We're looking at six to eight weeks, weather dependent. You know, though we want to try to get this thing in as quick as we can, we've got a piece of property up there that's doing some remodeling, and they're the ones that are requesting it for fire service, and along with that, you know, they were originally looking at doing a little different, but, but with Retchens being able to get here right away, we're gonna be able to meet their needs within that six to eight weeks also, so.
Thank you.
Chad, how much of this is assessed and how much are we paying?
Majority of this is gonna be assessed. This is all 8-inch and smaller. Our city spec is 8 inches and below is, is majority of that assessed to the property
And there is actually an added benefit on this too, isn't there, by, by creating that loop?
Well, we had to modify the, the plans just a little bit on that.
Okay.
Originally, we were gonna go all the way down to Sheridan, but we couldn't tie into Sheridan. That's two, two different pressure zones. So, so we're actually terminating this north of that cemetery. So, so that cemetery property and all that that we were talking about in the subcommittees and stuff before, that's not a part of this prob, this, this project right now. So, so, so the, the benefits for those property owners up there and stuff is, of course, city water, so they got something that they can rely on when their wells go bad, and then they got the fire protection.
So is there any concern on water quality then, if you're...
No, I think, I think with the increase of usages up there, it's, it's gonna help us out with, with getting that water turned over and stuff. You know, more, more people using that water is gonna help us out.
Right.
So this is coming off Eisenhower?
Yes. Coming off Eisenhower going south.
And will not tie into Sheridan?
No, will not tie into.
Any further questions? All right. Thank you, Chad.
Yep. Thank you.
Any public input on this? Further comments, council? Hearing nothing else?
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right. Last but not least, item 33. Would look for a motion to consider resolution number 2024-13 authorizing some middle of an extremely blighted determination study for a site located at approximately 105 East Norfolk Avenue or the northeast corner of North First Street and East Norfolk Avenue.
I'll make a consideration of approval for resolution number 2024-13.
Second.
Motion and a second, and I believe, Candace, will you introduce this?
Yeah, so this study was actually not commissioned by the city of Norfolk. It was actually commissioned by the proposed developer for the first Norfolk space, and so he has with him Mr. Kurt Elder, who will be presenting the study. Kurt conducted the study, and he'll be presenting it, and he's, he's done several of these in the state of Nebraska, so.
Okay. Thank you, Candace. Welcome, Kurt. We'll work on it.
Good evening.
Evening.
Yeah. As Candace said, my name's Kurt Elder. I'm a certified planner, been going on a little over 15 years. I'm also a certified data analyst. My primary work is with the city of Lincoln, if this is an affiliate with them. But in that role, I built their screen methodology, taught the city of Omaha, and I've been, have been doing this work to help other communities throughout the state. What I like to do is give a little context, because I know this is the first one in the community, and there's this question of what is the difference between blight and extreme blight? Many of you have seen blight studies before. Let me set this down. Many of you have seen blight studies before, and usually there's these big, big documents in which you go look at parcel level information, and you're seeing how old the pipe is, and you're just checking out boxes to see if those things work. That's a creature of the legislature. And extreme blight, while it shares the same name, really is a different creature by itself. Within this creature, we're using just a enhanced level of review, and we're using census data. So the screen that I have in front of you, as I was back there making out my notes, I realized that I, I should have rearranged this differently. So we're gonna start in the middle and talk about studies and data, we'll talk about geography, but then we'll get into how, how the sauce is made. So I think that's what the community's really curious about. Again, there's a difference between blight and extreme blight, and in that regular blight, we do a mass study, and extreme blight, we use poverty data and unemployment data. Had we, had the legislature wanted us to use, complete a study in which we didn't use census data, on the, on the poverty side, we would have used that process similar to what we use for HUD programs to delineate low and moderate income areas, but the legislature didn't ask us to do that. If we were to look at areas of unemployment, we would have conducted and paid for a study from the Department of Labor. The legislature did not ask us to do that. They directly asked us to use five-year average ACS data, American Community Survey. And for some context, the American Community Survey replaced the long form by the census in 2010, and it's the premier timely data source that we have at all geographies nationwide. The statute, given the meat and potatoes, asks us to look at an area that is blighted and substandard, and then to determine that needs two common thresholds. One, does it have an average area of at least 20% poverty? And two, does it have double the state's unemployment rate? The average unemployment rate. Words mean a lot. And when we use the word average, and when the statute also doesn't use words like contiguous, it provides for a lot of flexibility. This methodology was reviewed with... This methodology was reviewed with David Drews, who's no longer with UNO's Center for Public Affairs Research. He does a number of population projections, or did. Checked the methodology with him, he agreed with me. I ran it by Senator Wayne's office when we first proposed it. There was no objection. And in the four years since we've been doing this method across the state, there has been no legislative action to either change our methodology or create an interim study to look at, to see if we've been doing what we are doing correctly. So we believe we have a really defensible method to move forward. So, but going into this, when we look at geography, census data, the statute just says we need to use decennial census information or ACS information. It does not state what level of geography that we should use. When we think of our small levels of blight areas, they're very small. But those, but those places intersect in large geographic areas. So let's see if I can do this right. Catch my notes here. And just one other facet here. When we think about census data, it's not, it's not one hundred percent this is the correct estimate. Census data is a, is an estimate that's within a ninety percent confidence level. When we think of our national surveys, we know that, you know, we see those polls. X number of Americans think this margin of error of that. They do that within a confidence level. They have a confidence that that's the right error. Census data at a high level, population, that's at a ninety percent confidence level and usually very, very low margin of error. As we get into lower, lower levels of geography and off pieces of information, those margins, margins of error increase pretty quickly. So just to give you an idea here, this is Norfolk. The, it's zoomed into Norfolk. I have colored out those different tracks. You'll see up in the right-hand corner, there is track nine six oh six. That's the track that this project falls within. Facing, we could use this whole tracks information to describe that little block. That's what the statute wants us to do. So all that rural area outside the city, inside the city, we just get into, that's just messy. Let's go a bit finer. And so what we have highlighted here is there's a light blue line, that's a census block group. That's the lowest level that this kind of data can be acquired from, from the census level. However, when they get to low levels like this, and I think I should pause for a second. Again, this, when this geography was drawn decades ago, I was not alive. I don't know how many of you were around, probably not many. This little block was included in this block group. So when we see that, say, we have a very urban area also being explained by very rural areas. So as, when I was talking about error rates and error information, and then why we need to be flexible and we need to find a way to operationalize this idea. Just giving you some ideas, so when you look at Nebraska as a whole, which is the top graph, the total population is the margin of error is almost nothing, there is zero. Just giving you Lincoln as a context. You know, we have a very low margin of error. And then again, for the total population in Norfolk, very low. But as we look at those populations for whom population, for whom poverty is determined, we see those error rates increase. And when we look at a finer level of those, the population for people below the poverty level, poverty level in Norfolk, that margin of error for that one is eighteen percent. Meaning that your poverty rate in Norfolk really is, probably bounces between ten percent and fifteen percent. The median's about twelve point nine. So this is what the legislature has given us to use. We have imprecise, fuzzy, warm, but current data from the ACS. And we have to operationalize it within a way that gets us to where we need to be. So we have three big topics here. We, we realize that the voters in county and the state had supported and approved the idea of extreme blight in two thousand and twenty. Let me take a look here. Roughly sixty-two percent in the state supported the idea of extreme blight. Approximately fifty-seven percent of voters here in Madison County supported the idea. When we look at how flexible the statute is, again, because we can use averages, there's a non-continuous facet. The margins of error allow us to give flexibility to bring what we need for this, for this effort. And when we, when we operationalize this, we just need to create something that was defensible, rational. And so we created a standard procedure. We could have used state-level information. We instead chose just to use block group level that intersected the boundary, so it's very local. We're not pulling from Omaha or other places. And we've developed an area that has a poverty threshold that meets the state statute. We developed a unemployment area that meets the state statute. And where those two intersect and overlap, a approved designated blighted area becomes qualified for extreme blight. This is my twenty-third extreme blight study. Done it in Lincoln, sort of Omaha, Norfolk, Grand Island. Other communities in the region are also looking to do the same facet. Extreme blight has three big purposes and measures for it. It allows the applicant to access additional five years of, of potential TIF years to help cash flow a project. In those areas where it's in a more of a single-family home, which is a homeownership area, it allows persons to apply for a five thousand dollar earned income tax credit. Other communities are intentionally blighting and extreme blighting portions of their city. Just so those persons can get that reinvestment back into their community. With that being said, I have covered a lot and I apologize. But if there's any questions about the study, I would gladly try my best to answer them.
I, I do have a question. Can you repeat those last three incentives to use the extreme blight?
So there's three main incentives. If an area is in an extreme blight and you support that extra, you support this designation, a project can access an additional five years of TIF period or a diverted periods, diverted period. Whereas in typical regular blighted areas, the maximum is fifteen. In this area, it's another five years. That's one. Two is if you have an area that is more of a place where someone buys a home and makes it their home. If a person buys a home, they can then apply for a five thousand dollar earned income state tax credit. So let's say you owe a thousand dollars on your state taxes. We would apply for that, and that just gets taken off. In Lincoln, in the last fiscal year, we had a hundred and seventy-one persons take advantage of that program. In five years, about a million dollars of, of benefit has received and came to the city.
Is that an individual?
That is, an individual has to apply. There's a form that the Department of Revenue has, and other popular online tax filing software programs ask you that question. And they walk you through that process. It's not terribly hard, actually.
Is that applicable year after year?
It is applicable year after year until it is exhausted. So let's say that you, let's say, let's say you bought your home three years ago, and you didn't know that you were in an extreme blighted area. You can go back and mint your taxes, claim that benefit, and reapply and get that forward. Of course, I don't offer tax advice. That is not what I do. Any other questions I could answer for the council?
What was the third one?
Excuse me. Oh, for pizzazz. I have an income tax credit, twenty years of TIF. I'm just blanking, honey, I'm so sorry. I needed a drink. My apologies, I'm blanking. I will surely get back to Candace and make sure you have that.
It might come back. Let me ask you about the analysis done here on this specific property at First and Norfolk within the, you said you analyzed these by census block, correct?
Census block group.
Census block grouping. And the criteria in which state statute lays out eligibility for extremely blighted, say that again.
Sure, it's the, the eligibility is that a area that a, that blighted, an area needs to be both. Needs to both have twenty percent average unemployment, twenty percent average poverty, and two hundred percent of the state's unemployment rate. So we've talked about what the error rate just for the city is within poverty, ten to fifteen. For unemployment information, that's around forty percent. So it's really varied. So the statute says that we have to use a certain data source. And we try our best to operationalize it in the most reasonable, preferable way and defensible way.
So in the area that you studied, right? Okay, let's get it simplified here. What did you find? What were your findings on those unemployment, income?
Sure, so when we created our area, because the statute allows us to average and then to also select non-continuous areas to assess together, we bring together a mass. When we find that together, the, the average unemployment area was six point nine percent, and we needed to break the threshold of six, of a six point one four. And when we looked at poverty, the poverty rate that we were able to develop was twenty-one point four. When I say we, I mean I.
So within that area, the poverty rate was twenty-one point one four?
Within the study area, within, that is the image in the map.
The study area?
Yeah, was, was twenty-one point four percent.
Okay.
And when we think of averaging, it's, we, we go back to, you know, early math. We have two separate areas. And let's say that one area has twenty out of a hundred people, that's twenty percent poverty. Another area might have forty out of a hundred, that's forty. You add the numerators and denominators, it's just simple division. In that example, that would be thirty percent poverty.
So how many participants do you need to, to have a complete study?
This does not rely upon participants. This is solely relying upon census information that the legislature says that we have to use. And when we, when we look at how the census creates their information, in a given year, the census survey is about three and a half million people. Then think five-year average, you're looking at seventeen, eighteen million people. And that's spread across the country, of course. And so the ACS information is not a true hard count census every year. That's why I was trying to make this distinction between what a classic blight study does, which is we look at an area, we look at parcels, we see the age of, age of infrastructure. It's different. Extreme blight, through the legislature's direction, has said you have to use ACS information. And that ACS information has an estimate, and those margins of error around it. And our job is to bring that together and put it together in a package that either works or does not work. And
So, right, so the blighted area obviously is about the buildings and the, the conditions of things in that area. Extreme blight's about the people living in that area.
Right, right. And so when we, I'm going to take a step back, we can look at this area right here. So this is the smallest level of geography that we can get this information out. Are there people in the site up in that upper left-hand corner? It's, it's a vacant building. But we have to attribute all the information that the Census Bureau gives us to that geography and use that as a starting base. The statute then allows us to combine those geographies together to create a massing that then allows us to create this, to create the conditions that allows us to extreme blight the site.
All right, thank you, Kurt. I think we, we do want to allow time for discussion.
Kurt, who created the blocks?
Say what?
Who, who created the, the boundaries for the blocks? So the ninety-six oh six and ninety-six oh seven, how were those boundaries created?
That was created by city officials decades ago.
Okay.
And so as your city grows, as each block or block group or tract gets to a certain size, it's up to your city staff to then split that to then accommodate that growth. So we are working within a structure that the legislature gave us and within the history of the community. And we're working towards the best path forward.
Any other questions for Kurt while he's up here?
Thank you for your time. I'll be in the back.
Thank you. All right. Any, any public input on this and wishing to speak?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Scott Williams. I live at eleven eleven Nebraska Avenue. And Kurt, that was, that was, you know, that's a statistical analysis of that area. I am all for, I'm declaring this piece, this piece of property as extremely, and extremely blighted. It is the common sense thing to do. One oh five Norfolk Avenue, in my eyes, is the post, is one of the poster childs for TIF. A substantial investment that Mr. Otto's group is proposing here just doesn't come along very often. And I honestly believe that the but-for question applies to this project. But for TIF, this project won't go. It won't move forward. According, you know, from what Mr. Elder said, it seems that this property fits the definition of the extreme blighted and substandard area of review. It answers the but-for question, I believe. And I just strongly encourage you all to vote unanimously to authorize the resolution twenty-two-four thirteen, authorizing submittal of an extremely blighted determination study to the site at one oh five East Norfolk Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else?
He's smart, isn't he? I mean, that guy's just incredible. That's why I have my hair, Kurt flies so far over my head. Doesn't even bump it. I just wanted to comment on the why, right? We're, we're the ones that asked him to do the study and bring the extreme TIF to the community. We're obviously the third developer that's taken a look at this piece of ground and tried to make it work. And TIF, TIF has a multi-year payout, but that's not really how most developers use it. We use it by monetizing the bond. And we go to a bank, and the bank helps loan the money based on the bond amount, which helps create the capital stack so that we can put enough cash together to complete the project. And so that's, that's during between fifteen and twenty years is just how tight this project is and how much effort it needs to bring it together. It's, it's not about a twenty-year payout. It's about monetizing the bond on a twenty-year payout.
Mark, you talked before about the mix of uses here you're proposing at the site. Can you elaborate a little bit on that? We had kind of a shortened timeframe, and that was a limited discussion on the workforce, workforce housing policy. Since we're talking about the, the potential extreme blight determination here, talk a little bit more about the proposed uses as part of mixed development at Norfolk, at First Norfolk.
Yeah, so what I pulled up there is a map of our first floor massing study. And you'll see along the north end of the site is more of a townhome that Amsterdam Bavarian feel that we're going to do, which is going to be a great accent to the park at a high level. The, the square boxes, rectangles you see on the backside facing the parking lot labeled TU are tuck-under parking, which is garages underneath the units. The other larger squares you see on the pedestrian mall around the square and up against the park edge, that's our commercial, our retail. And what we anticipate is a vast array of restaurant, pub, smaller restaurants, maybe, maybe kind of a version of Exarban Village, if we can put that together, where you might do two or three eating spots that connect to a common area. If you haven't been to Exarban Village in Omaha, it's a great place to go and experience it. And they created it around a square also. In, in the pedestrian path, where it's narrow there, I don't know if you can see dotted lines on there, but those spaces, we're trying to break down to about seven hundred square feet. We want to create an incubator space, a shop space, so that we can have businesses either A, take a shot at the second location because it's a reasonable footprint, or B, actually have somebody come from what they're doing and take the next level up. We're, we're working through the design on that. We We're, we're working through the design on that. We, we, we specifically want to enhance downtown Norfolk, not compete with it. We think the draw that this will bring in will be great for all of downtown Norfolk and the city as a whole. When, when you take some of these sites, and, and I'm gonna bounce here, but think of New England and the Wayling communities. Those were dead towns, just dead for years. And eventually they made them cute and they made shops and they made restaurants. And now New England's such a hotspot for people to leave the city and go. You're creating a spot here, um, where not just people from out state Nebraska will find it interesting, but you're gonna pull people out of the cities who will come and experience this. People that live in Omaha who maybe grew up in Pender or Pierce or wherever. You always have that affinity towards these towns. You just gotta give them a reason to show up. And the more people you get to show up and experience Norfolk, I don't have to tell you guys, I mean, this place is great. Um, we're gonna try to make it better, but it's already great. And the more people you bring here, the more you'll get back. And your best customer is always a repeat customer.
Questions, Council? I would ask on the base of it. So it's, uh, not on regular occasion that we get proposals like this, mixed use development totaling about thirty-two million dollars, I think you said. So, two-part question, two-part series of questions. Why Norfolk, why now and why here? And then secondarily, to bring it home as it ties to what you're asking for here tonight, extreme blighted. Why, why is an extreme blight designation, uh, necessary for the project to move forward?
So I would tell you, this is going back a few years. But Matt Ree from Olson, uh, we were doing a development, Grand Island said, you gotta look at Norfolk, man. Uh, they've got a mayor there that's rocking it. What he said. And, uh, so he brought us.
Question wasn't planted, by the way.
And he said, you better come look at this. And, and we brought our designer down from Indianapolis at that time. And he drove to the town and he saw the roundabouts and he says, it'll work. And we built a community based off of his vision of the roundabouts. Because in Carmel, Indianapolis, Indiana, uh, they've got the most roundabouts in the country. You're catching them, but it's gonna take a while. Um, Lincoln's competing also in that market. But it's, what it shows is, believe it or not, kind of a trendy intuition. And so that's, that's what brought us to Norfolk.
I, I wasn't expecting roundabouts to be part of that answer, by the way.
And then, you know, the down, to bring us back down to First Norfolk, we looked at this four years ago, whatever it was. I, I just didn't have the vision for it. I didn't see what you guys saw. I didn't see the, the money that you were gonna put into Johnson Park and the kayaking the river and create that experience. I hadn't, I wasn't aware of the, of the commitment the foundation made into buying this ground. I knew they owned it or they were buying it, but when you think about a foundation taking that type of a commitment, that's a huge step for a city. I mean, that, that's an all in basket moment. So now that we're here and people inside your city said, you gotta get back here. You're, you need to pay attention to this. And, and we went and looked and I, I think it took me five minutes to see what it could be. Uh, and seeing the, the visual path that could tie the park and the river. And if you look at that center building, D building, I believe it's called, the right-hand corner of that building basically lines up with the pedestrian bridge from the park side. So, and we met this morning to figure out a way to make that handicap accessible from your downtown straight to Johnson Park. These are big things for small families. You got strollers, you've got children, you've got people that are disabled, you've got older people. We have literally created a spot where you can go from block cow, fat pig, all the way up to Johnson Park and feel, feel very invited and welcome. You never have to leave the site. The, the extreme blight, this is such a, such a costly site to get into and it has to be. I mean, it's, it's where it's at and it's what it's cost other people to make this commitment. That it, it's a critical path on this. I'm, I'm a firm believer in not asking for something we don't need. Um, there was a point we didn't think we would look at EEA. Later on, we realized, hey, we have to have this. We can't build this at twenty-five million and build it the way it should be built. And our commitment on this is truly the hundred year thought. It isn't, how do, how do we get something in, get it built, get it sold, take our profit and move on? It's, it's not how we operate and how we look at it. Norfolk's invested in this. The foundation's invested in this and we wanna participate in that and really leave something special.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Anyone else wishing to speak on this?
Kurt Elder again. Sir, you had asked me a question about the, about the three facets. The third one was those areas that are extremely blighted, those areas don't count towards your final blight total percentage within the city. So cities of a certain size can only have thirty-five percent blight, that's what your city falls within. Those areas that are extreme blighted, that area doesn't count towards that cap.
I, I was gonna ask you that also. So it doesn't count towards it, but does it actually remove the regular blighted from that percentage?
It does not.
It does not?
So make sure I understand this right. The blight, the underlying blight still remains, but it has a additional layer on top of it of that extreme blight. This blight that's, that is still there doesn't count towards your total cap.
So it does get removed?
One more time?
So, so that regular blight percentage towards our thirty-five percent actually does get removed?
Right, yeah. So let's say that you had ten acres of blight that accounted for, let's say you had a hundred acres and just in your city and you had ten acres blight, you got ten percent and you extreme blight one of those acres, you then go down to nine percent blight.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Jim McKenzie. This appears to be a wonderful development and I wish the developer much success, but we always have to come back to a little bit of reality. I don't know how much TIF the developer's gonna ask for, that hasn't been brought up, that I'm able to tell. I did some calculations based upon dollars of improvement. If there was a thirty million dollar improvement and it was fully valued at that and a property tax rate of one point nine, dollar ninety per hundred, the annual benefits around five hundred and seventy thousand dollars over twenty years, that's eleven point four million. Those are rough numbers based on some rough calculations, which would make the total TIF benefit about thirty-eight percent of the total investment. I guess the concern that I have is, yeah, I'd like to see this accomplished without a significant TIF incentive. Is there no way that we can have a development there that doesn't, doesn't take away the potential for future property taxes on a development that would happen there for twenty years? This is prime real estate situated adjacent to the recently renovated park that received an investment of roughly sixteen million dollars. How this property can be classified as extremely blighted, sitting next to that development with all the investments that's been made is surprising to me. The decision you're about to make here, or at least to move forward with, will bind future city councils to not collect any property tax on this area, on this development for twenty years. That's a pretty significant decision that you're making. You are having difficulties with your budget, paying for modest improvements to the police station, which is very much needed, and street repair. And i- it's hard for me to see a, a development that happens in Norfolk now that's not TIF'd. We are continuously tipping all significant developments and those tax revenues are not coming in for fifteen or twenty years. And how do you plan to address the shortfalls in property taxes that you're going to have? How is that gonna happen? I will note that Norfolk property taxes are already higher than our non-metro sister cities of Carney, Grand Island, Fremont and Columbus. This is a generational, again, a generational, non-reversible decision. I understand the development's wonderful. I'd love to have it. I, I am very challenged with those kind of tax benefits that ultimately the rest of the citizens will have to make up for. Ultimately, if you gotta, you gotta pay for the things that you wanna do in the city, where are you gonna get that money? And if all of your new developments are all TIF'd, you've gotta get it from somebody else. And so that's gonna be the rest of the citizens. So I urge you to use caution on this. Be careful, you are binding future councils for twenty years on your decision here. Thank you.
Jim, just one question, cause you said no property taxes would be paid on this property for twenty years. You do realize even with the application of TIF, um, and TIF utilization here, property taxes are still paid on the, the property.
Taxes are paid, but they're given back to the developer. So it's a circle goes right back. So yes, you can say the property taxes.
The basis, the property taxes.
Right back to the developer. So the city and the county and all the taxing entities don't get those property taxes, they go to the developer.
But, but you're acknowledging the basis that the property taxes are paid.
They're paid, but they go back to the developer. So you can say that they're paid, but they're going back in your pocket. So you're taking it out of one pocket and then you're putting it back in the other pocket.
That, I don't think that's true. The basis of property taxes are paid to the county.
That's the way TIF works. It goes to the county and the county sends it back to the developer.
The current base that is being received, we continue to receive for twenty years.
Yeah, that's what I asked about, Jim, the current basis.
Another twenty years and we keep, still keep getting the same base. Or, or you look for another developer.
It's been almost sitting there twenty years. It's been sitting, Alco hasn't been there since twenty twelve and we still call it the Alco parking lot. You know, so I mean, nothing's happened in fourteen years. So what's to say if you don't approve this project? We, it's sitting there for another twenty years. There's only been, in fourteen years, there's only been three, I think three, maybe four viable, uh, developers that were actually, that tried to get through this process and get something going. So the chances of this getting developed in the next fourteen years are very, are pretty slim. Unless you have somebody come step forward that has the ability and the capital to put that much out there. You're talking thirty-two million dollar investment. You know, part of that'll be with a TIF bonding. But the bulk of that capital's coming out of their pocket, which is a big time risk in this. I mean, with the population base we have, they've, I'm sure they've all considered that. But, uh, this development could quite possibly rival, um, I mean, you haven't seen anything like this since the mall was built when it comes to, uh, real, um, retail sales potential within a development. So the retail sales coming off this will greatly affect the city's budget with our budget mostly being made up of retail sales. It's almost sixty percent, not quite, but that's what it is when you have.
Forty percent.
What's that?
Forty percent, sales tax.
Or forty, forty percent overall budget, yeah, forty percent. And then you get, we're pulling like sixteen percent in for uh, property taxes makes up the city budget. So if you just look at the hard numbers, what they, what the city would have recouped for what they, what they're maybe thinking they could pull in for real estate or, uh, retail sales was probably around in the city's coffers, sixty-seven thousand a year is what at this point in time, what they're kind of projecting. And then if you look at what the, uh, what the city gains to lose by not, you know, over time not collecting those improvements, that's about four hundred and thirty-eight thousand in taxes, I think, what, what we looked at, right? Which would, which the city's budget, which would be about sixty-four thousand a year. So in, in a, if you're just looking at apples, just bare bone, it's kind of like a wash for this project to happen for the city at, as our budget sits. I mean, let's just break it down that way, cause that's a real simple way to look at it. And so now you're talking about very little money coming out of the city's pocket. You've got an investor who can utilize this TIF bond to seize the capital he needs to promote or accommodate the thirty-two million he needs to, uh, build this project. And we're saying, no, we don't wanna do that. The potential loss to the community is so great, I don't know how you can overlook that. I mean, it's, you've gotta look at it as a net positive, net negative. Stack them up. It ends up being a neutral, probably net positive when it comes to what is gonna affect the city. Now, when it comes to the actual people in the community, sorry Jim, just let me finish this. Comes to the actual people in the community, the people that are gonna be able to enjoy this in Norfolk are great. I mean, just the fact that it's gonna have some housing there, it's gonna have little boutiques, it's gonna have, uh, restaurants. This is a place where people are gonna wanna hang out. And we're not doing a thing, really.
You are, yeah, I mean, you are in terms of the opportunity cost, if you could get another developer that didn't require this level of TIF, then you've lost opportunity to have a development that doesn't require this level of tip. Now, I, I'm sure there was, those will say this is the only thing that we're gonna get and that's all our chances are. But we just haven't even finished the Johnson's Park project with sixteen million dollars. I would think that property is valuable. I think that would have some interest. My, my point is, when we continue to develop and TIF everything, at what point in time, where are we gonna get the revenues to run the city? Because every significant development, it seems like, is TIF'd. And so, or I should say a lot of them are. So where, where are you going to get the revenues? Because you are leveraging the rest of the citizens for the next fifteen to twenty years. Because you've gotta get the revenues from them, cause you're not getting them from new development.
So Jim, acknowledgement that the basis on the property tax is still paid, still goes to public coffers. Um, you've heard an, an investor, a private business come here and say, we're very enthusiastic about this project, we're excited about it, it's the right time in Norfolk, but we need these incentives to do it. Thirty-two million dollar total project. What I'm hearing you say, you say is, no, not good enough, take your business elsewhere. Is that your position?
Josh, don't try and put words in my mouth.
Well, it sounds, it sounds like that's your position.
Exercise caution, because what you're doing is leveraging the tax dollars for the rest of the citizens for this period of time.
And how, and how is that the case if the property taxes are still being paid like they are today and they will be next year and the year after that?
Josh, the taxes that are being paid is probably on a two million dollar valuation. We're talking about.
Because it hasn't been developed, we're trying to get it developed, correct?
The, the taxes that we're losing out is on the additional thirty million dollars of investment. So, yes, you'll still.
That probably wouldn't happen without the incentive.
Well, that, that's what the discussion is. Obviously, there are those are gonna say this is the only way and we have to do this, but my, my concern is we continually TIF everything and at what point, where do you draw the line? Is there any limits at all? Do we just TIF everything?
Okay, thanks Jim.
I think maybe it's worth, Mark, talking a little bit about what his plan is with TIF and how it's, um, helpful in this case, maybe.
Can I share something real quick?
Yeah, and how he, and how he might, um, plan on using that, I guess. I think, I think also in, in listening to this whole discussion, there is a thought of property tax versus sales tax and the revenues coming in and how that affects the city, whether something's developed or not developed. So, it's not always an easy decision on TIF, but you have to think of those things when something's developing. And I think maybe, maybe lay out your outline of how soon you're hoping to have something like this developed. Obviously, it takes a little while to get clients in, but maybe just a little bit more explanation would answer some of the questions that anybody has.
I just wanted to touch on, um, something that was said that talked about all these major, every major project needing TIF and that's just not true. So this is spreadsheet that our office, uh, put together. Uh, my colleague, Michael Willard, does a great job with it and it's not updated. I wasn't expecting to pull it up tonight, but it's not updated to date, but we use building permit records to track um, what the estimated investment is for business and industry, and this is over fifty thousand. So I don't have all of the housing development as it relates to, um, Norfolk and what we have going on, but this is business and industry. Any investment, um, that's new is seen over here in this new construction investment. Um, and since twenty seventeen till current or until August of twenty twenty-three, we've seen three hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine million. I mean, that's a lot of money. Three hundred and ninety-five million, three hundred and ninety-six million dollars of new construction investment essentially. And so of that, um, And so of that, $19,500 was actually tax increment financing projects. On the right side, we have remodels, remodel investment, so renovations. And on that side, $97 million in remodel investment, and of that was about 6.5 million in TIF. So I would say that, that is inaccurate, that all of the new investment that we're seeing in the community is related to tax increment financing. We've determined that there are specific areas of the community that do have extra struggles. That's why when you see a developer come up here and ask you to come alongside them, to partner with them, they're trying to do something that doesn't make financial sense for them. And so I appreciate your consideration of this. I just wanted to share this spreadsheet. Our team will work to get this updated and get it out to you all, so you can put eyes on it more in depth.
Thank you, Candace. Anyone else wishing to speak on this?
I just want to clarify, I did not say all developments. I said the significant ones that seem to come before this body. The, the, the large ones, the, you know, the legacy bends, the, all the other, the large developments seem to be, at least that's what I hear about. Obviously, there's going to be small residential, there's going to be all the other stuff that happens, but there just seems like a significant flow. So that's my point. I didn't say all, so thank you.
Yeah, I think sometimes, you know, individuals don't necessarily need our help. And so they go out and they do business, and, and that's great. And so what comes before this body and gets the attention of this council is those that are looking for the city to come alongside them, to partner with them.
Thank you.
Mayor, is it okay if I just say one thing that's about to cross my mind that I, I just want to point out? So, and I'm guessing this is probably where Mark's going to go here, since he's walking back up here. I think, I don't want there to be any confusion. So when people are looking at, at TIF, you have to, if you're saying you're giving tax dollars away, that otherwise, if you're going to the community, you have to assume that it's going to happen anyway. I don't, and I don't think that's the case. At least, you know, there's, there's lots of projects we've, we've got, and state law requires redevelopers to go through an analysis and provide that this isn't possible. And so I think that touches on what Councilman Clausen was saying, and what others have been saying too, that this is, this is new. And without it, without incentives like this, and designations of blight, you're not going to get that investment, and then there, there remains. And I, and I just wanted to make that point. And so I was actually going to ask if Mark would expand on that, on whether or not he feels this is needed.
That, that would be the understatement of the, of the evening, of whether the TIF is needed on this project. If it were a 15-year TIF, the project doesn't work. Literally, the project will not happen on a 15-year standardized TIF. It needs to be the extreme blighted TIF to make this project happen. That's how tight it is. But, but I would note to you, I mentioned just a little bit of Exurban Village. I think that's a blighted and TIF area. I would, I would have you look around the country and say, what are the great areas? How are they doing them? The Opera House in Carmel, Indiana, that I mentioned the city earlier, was built because that city embraced TIF in 1998. They have the same mayor since 1998, unless he left in the last year or two. He embraced TIF. He understood all TIF projects are an investment in your future. And I would, I would give you the example to take a piece, look at a piece of farm ground, because that was the early question, right? How can we TIF farm ground? Look at the tax dollars that that'll generate on year 16. And understand now, he mentioned Legacy Bend. Legacy Bend started in 2019. Those years are coming up pretty quick, where the first building on that site will probably outweigh the TIF, or the taxes on that ground, for the history of that ground, the first building. And now there's what, seven or eight of them? I mean, a community has to invest in the community. I'm, I'm guessing most of you have a retirement plan, and you invested in that retirement plan. TIF is the same thing for a community. It is, we could all sit back and wait for things to happen. In this case, I believe you offered TIF to the previous two developers, and you offered them everything you could to try to bring them here, and it didn't work. It did not work. What were the interest rates when you offered them that? I think they were about three to three and a half percent. We're more than double that today. This is a very different economy. And could we wait? Sure, we could wait 20, 30, 40 years for it to come back down to 3%. We don't want to calc that, you know, how long that's going to take to regroup, he can't. But I also think it's important to say, when we've looked at the sales tax on this, the sales tax generated will outweigh the current property tax. So this site improves. You asked about timing. We plan to start construction June 19th of this year, and my goal is to finish it November 1st of next year. It's an aggressive schedule, it's optimistic, but I've always been pretty optimistic, or we wouldn't be doing it anyway. It's, it's important that communities, and I'll, I'll speak from the consulting role, which I do with a lot of communities around Nebraska. It is important that you seek out projects that start with low income and high-end projects. It is important that you seek them out and utilize them to build that nest egg. Because, as you know, we talked about 15 or 20 years, that's a small snippet of history. I know 15 or 20 years sounds a lot to people my age, but 20 years from now, when you start doing that, what's that 50-year window look like? I'm guessing when you put in streets and schools, you're not trying to figure out what the five or 10-year problem is. You're looking at a 50-year solution, or 100. You got to look at the big picture. These are investments for the city. And if you want to stay in neutral, a lot of communities have. Look at a lot of communities across Nebraska that don't even know fully how to utilize blight or TIF. Look at their population base, go drive their community today, go see what their community was 20 years ago. You guys embraced it, and you attacked it, and look what Norfolk has become and continues to become. I would tell you, don't take your foot off the gas, it's working. As a council, you guys have done amazing things over the last several years. Keep pushing. Keep bringing projects in, keep putting the effort in. And you're going to see Norfolk become one of those communities that we talked about, the New England style, where people come. You've got something special. Don't give up for short term.
Thank you, Mark. I think that addresses something that Councilman Granquist asked about the phasing potential of this project, and you addressed that. So it's not like we're looking at a five to seven-year phase out, you're looking at a very aggressive, aggressive build. Sales tax, I think you make the argument on this project, as Councilman Clausen was, far outweighs property tax impact. And the other thing, Mark, I wanted to ask you, and we'll let the next speaker go, but I, I do want to ask you about TIF's application in other communities that you work in, because I think it's an important consideration to make, that cities aren't competition with each other, like businesses. And is it true, in the developments, the significant housing projects, mixed-use developments that you've done, that TIF is almost a foregone conclusion for a developer in seeking to do projects in any community, community that you work in at this point in time?
Your, your statement is so great and so true. When you, when you look across the state, and this is such an interesting project, that it almost rises above it, but nothing rises above it completely. When, when you look at it for a state, every community is competing. When, when you see a stadium go up somewhere, people are competing for that stadium. When you see housing go up, people are competing. When, when you do a map of the state, which I did several years ago, and we said, where should we build? What could we build? How could we build? Where is a friendly council? Because if it's not a friendly council, honestly, life's too short. We can, you'll get abused somewhere else. This is a special project, it really is. Chuck Winkler, a Realtor in Grand Island, once said, sometimes it's better to be the second Realtor or the third wife. You see the flaws of how things worked. We're the third developer on this project. At least one of the developers I'm familiar with, they're substantial, they have capabilities. They've, they've proven themselves where they're at around the state, and they passed. That's worth noting. And, and I would also note, when we looked at the EA, initially, we said, hey, we, we don't need it. We think we can make this project go. If we could do this project for 25 million, we weren't even going to worry about the enhanced employment area. Can't make it go for 25 million, because we're going to build something special, it's 32 million, and we need that EA that we impose on ourself. But it's, it's a wonderful attribute to get us to that capital stack.
So fair to say, in competition with other cities, cities who aren't fully embracing the incentives they have available to them to, to encourage development, it's not worth your time.
I would tell you to look at the 2010 and the 2020 census, and you can tell which ones probably didn't embrace it.
Very good.
Their population didn't grow.
Thank you.
Councilman Mayor, appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm Steve Centerman, Chair of the Greater Norfolk Economic Development Foundation. Here to speak in favor of the study and the prospect of this $13 million project in our downtown. For those familiar with the foundation, we were formally established, our current structure in 1985, but have roots much earlier than that. We have privately raised dollars that we use to strategically buy properties in the Norfolk area to help spur economic development, whether that be for recruiting new companies, expanding current businesses, increasing housing, or other economic development incentives to get it spurred. This property was purchased with the same intent by the foundation. We want to guarantee that this property will be developed in a way to complement and capstone the downtown and help spur economic development with it. Over the last four years, the property has gone through diligence, as it's been stated, with several different developers. Unfortunately, they struggled to make the development financially viable in the current environment that we're in. But with the programs that have been discussed, Mark's group has brought forward a development that's viable. But they've also set themselves apart in terms of the level of quality of the development and its ability to really integrate itself with the rest of downtown. I give Mark and his group a real, a lot of credit for that, and really hope that they're able to execute that. You've heard a lot about the new commercial space, new businesses, and increased sales tax that this development will have. But what I think is actually just as exciting is the prospect of additional 30 units of housing downtown. I'm fortunate as a current downtown resident on Norfolk Avenue to enjoy the increase in new restaurants and, and bars and shopping, specifically the bars. But the, the demand for downtown housing is as high as ever. You guys are probably familiar with the Wayne State Co-op Scholarship Program. We've got 30 students that are ending that program at the end of April. Unfortunately, they're going to have to move out of their, their apartments downtown. There is not apartments downtown for them to live in. If they want to be a part of that downtown community and continue to, to stay in the area, they, they can't live downtown. And so as that program continues to, to expand to 45 and 70 students, as we continue to have interest in living downtown, I really hope that this development can happen, and would appreciate the support of the council as we do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Steve, real quick.
Question, Steve.
When you had other developers come in and spoke with them, would you say this development, when you saw it for the, you know, for basically what they're proposing, was above and beyond what anybody else even was looking at doing?
I would say absolutely, Shane. Yeah. And, and we, as mentioned before, these other developers are also planning on using TIF in some of these things, and they financially couldn't, couldn't make it viable. So it's been really great to see Mark come forward with a project that obviously really set the bar for the quality of the project, but also hopefully is financially viable and continues to be that way.
Stephen, with that, can you say, is the foundation in unanimous support of entering into a purchase agreement with this developer?
Yeah, that's right. So we unanimously voted to do, sign for agreement with Mark and his group, and execute on that here a little over a week ago. So hope to close on the property later this year.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Having done some development in town, I'd just like to commend this gentleman for coming to town, and, and he is investing his own capital in this project. It's not, the TIF is, is just affording him the opportunity to do it. He would not be able to do it without it, and I do support him. And you all know I'm doing a TIF project out south of town at Medelman's Lake. And those, currently, there's 25 lots sold. Within the next 10 to 15 years, because of your foresight, the city will be receiving approximate, with the taxes those people are paying, the city will be, or the county, whatever, however the proportions are, they will be receiving upwards of $20 million in value in the next 10 to 15 years because of what's being built today. 10 to 20 mil, or 20 million, that is a significant, a significant amount of money that you have helped. I can guarantee you, I would not have started that development without TIF. And I think I have a $3.5 million with Phase 1 and 2 approximately. I would not, it just wasn't feasible. So I commend you for, with this gentleman and the council for moving forward with TIF. I think it is a great economic tool for all cities, all developments, small, big or small. It just, he is not going to get all of his properties rented and sold in a year. He's put, he's risking a lot of damn capital, I can tell you that. I know.
Don't, don't talk him out of it.
Say less, Paul.
He's sticking his neck out, and I commend him for that.
Thank you for that perspective, Paul. Anyone else wishing to comment? Okay, hearing no one else, any further discussion or comments, council? Hearing none, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Granquist, Arns, Snorton, Hildebrand, Clausen, and Muirin voting in opposition. Web, resolution 2024-13 is adopted.
All right, that concludes this meeting in the Norfolk City Council. We are adjourned.